It's on again.
Oh, it needs a warm-up. Okay, I'll wait a minute, thank you, sorry. Okay, we'll try this again, yes, there we go, there we go. Good evening, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of February 21st, 2017 of the Town Council. Steve, if you can lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dolores.
Counselor Bello.
Here.
Counselor Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Tina Maybey-Bate.
Counselor Martino.
Here.
Counselor Relus Runningley. And Counselor Spinella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry.
Here.
And Mayor Montanari.
Here, thanks Dolores. Before we go into the public hearing item on the MDC, I just wanted to take a minute to give folks that are here this evening, I know there has been several emails that have gone out and we've had some opportunity to give some feedback back to some folks that have reached out to the council before folks have a chance, and we welcome, of course, I think there's a lot of interested parents in the topic that was raised with respect to the turf, lacrosse, and concern about money going back to Hartford, so I just wanted to take a minute to be sure we corrected a couple of things that I think might be misunderstandings, and again, I welcome folks that are here this evening to speak on the item after our MDC issue. As you all know, we have had several months of exchange and conversation with the MDC about the issue of the reserve with respect to a potential default. I believe that there have been, almost all of the member towns affected by a potential reserve in the event of a Hartford default with the water project, have vocalized clear resistance to any funds coming from any town, and I certainly, along with our town manager who's attended all the meetings, have been very clear with the MDC that we completely object to the use of any reserve or taxpayer dollars coming from any of our towns to correct any potential default. So you'll note tonight that we are going to have a discussion about a resolution, which I think you'll find there's general consensus on the council on resisting that reserve. But just to clarify, there has not been any support from our community or our council for funding any reserve. We actually have been involved with some discussions about alternatives, which I think will be a part of our discussion this evening. So, we are not operating, just so everybody understands, with the thought process that we are going to fund or bail out anything that happens with respect to Hartford in exchange for any resources that are going to our community or our taxpayer dollars, and certainly with respect to education. I know that there were some references to the football field, I know that there is some dialogue occurring that's going to be part of our budget process, that is examining the expense associated with replacement of the football field. We've had some engineering reports that are indicating that is coming up and due, and I think there'll be some recommendations to our budget committee that talks about addressing that very, very, now if not this year, so the challenges associated with the replacement are going to be addressed. I did hear about the lacrosse thing, and I'm sure we're going to hear more about that. Certainly, we communicated back to the board that we understand this question is being raised, we don't have line-out appropriation, obviously, for the individual line-ups of education, but certainly, I know there's some dialogue, and I understand there's some discussions happening next week with the superintendent and representatives of the pro-support for the lacrosse, so I want to make sure we clarify that, I certainly welcome folks weighing in, but I think there is a little bit of misinformation out there about, you know, us funding Hartford's bailout and losing money for our town, that is not on our screen for support. So, again, tonight's first hearing item is actually a resolution that we, I think you're going to see we have more agreement than disagreement on, but we're going to hear from the public on that first. So our first order, thank you for letting me share that with all of you, I appreciate you all coming out too. Anyway, our first hearing item is this resolution about the MDC's imposition of a reserve, and we'll start the hearing, public hearing, with that item first, so anybody here to speak on that particular item only, if we could start with that first. So are folks here, or somebody here to talk about the MDC resolution? Yep? No, absolutely, come up and please give your name and go to the mic, that'd be great. Absolutely, thank you.
My name is Bob Woodward, I live at 456 Middletown Avenue here in Weathersfield. I'm an independent voter, a 38-year town resident. I want to say thank you for putting this out there, I have followed this in the paper and on the news, if this had hit our taxes, I would not be paying it. First of all, I've got no increase as a senior citizen in the past two or three years, but more importantly, their proposal is unjust, unfair, unethical, and should not be listened to, and I would suspect if all the towns would band together, since the MDC seems to be a regional authority who divides, who derives their ability to make decisions from the member towns, I suspect we could defeat this. May you continue to do this and support this, and thank you for doing it, I really wanted to come and say thank you to all of you tonight for putting this out there.
Thank you, Bob. Who else wishes to speak on the MDC resolution? Bob?
Good evening, Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I'm pleased that our, some of our members of our council had brought this resolution forward, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of news, I've met with, I've gone to several meetings where Mayor Bronin had been giving his presentation, and, you know, I believe, I believe that there's some inequities here between us and them, them is Hartford. I believe that if anybody wants to influence the mayor of Hartford, they should do so by telling him or having him go to the state and change his format for evaluating property at 32.2% of fair market value, to then come up and then whack it with your, their mill rate. Now, what the state has done is they set up another scheme, they set up a scheme when they gave them 32.2%, and we have to use 70%, because they're able to give a break to the people who are residents, who own residence, and residents include not only one-family houses, two-family houses, three-family houses, but also all their condominiums. And when you think of Bushnell Park, or the Bushnell Towers across, right next door to the MDC, those people are getting one terrific break on their taxes, as I mentioned at the last meeting, Mayor, hate to bring up the subject again, but, you know, Mayor Bronin lives in a 5,000-square-foot house, he pays 85, he paid 8,500 bucks in taxes this past year, you, Mayor, you live in a 4,000-square-foot house and pay double that. That's an inequity, yet he has not explored, nor has he pushed, to get his own people to pay their fair share like the rest of us. Instead, he came out here looking for us to pony up and help him out, we should not, and I support this resolution. I believe that it could be stronger, but it's better than what we have, and there's other towns like, what, West Hartford has done something like this, and all the towns should do that. Thank you, Mr. Hurley, for bringing this forward, but it needs to pass, and if it doesn't pass, I think those who vote no really should explain themselves, because this is, this is a very touchy situation, and we need, we need our support from our town council to squash this. The MDC should handle someone who does not pay their water bill or their sewer bill in the appropriate manner, and this is not the appropriate manner, the appropriate manner is put a lien on their property, foreclose on them if you have to, don't come after the rest of us like Mr. Bronin has been suggesting. Thank you very much, and please vote for this.
Dan.
Good evening, my name is Dan O'Connor, I live at 49 Broad Street. I do have some comments I want to read in, but just first, thank you for the clarification of where you stand, and if I understand the clarification, then I would anticipate this will be a unanimous vote in support of the resolution. If we are not going to, in any shape, form, provide money to the city of Hartford to pay their water bill, then I would expect that vote would be unanimous vote, and if that's the case, a lot of us can probably go home. So if you want to tell me it's a unanimous vote, I can stop talking. Not hearing that, I will continue my comments. I'm here tonight to speak as president and founder of the Weathersfield Youth Lacrosse Program. Early this year, I appeared before the Board of Education asking them to add a lacrosse program at the high school. Today, there are more than 100 high schools in the state of Connecticut that offer lacrosse. In fact, Weathersfield is the only town in our athletic conference that doesn't offer lacrosse. Last week, I was informed that the request for lacrosse funding was denied due to budget concerns, even though the request was for about $50,000 or .01% of the Board's annual budget, the amount was still considered too high. While saddened and disappointed, and definitely not looking forward to sharing this news with the hundreds of parents who signed a petition to ask the Board of Ed to add a program, you can only imagine how I felt a day later when I heard the town was, and I'll use the word considering, a bailout for Hartford. We have no money for our kids, but we can find money for Hartford's water bill. My charge as president of the Weathersfield Lacrosse League is to do what I believe is in the best interest of our lacrosse program. If the town is unable to secure funds to offer lacrosse at the high school level, then there should be a valid reason. To be told there are no funds available and that the Board of Ed will not be offering any new programs in this year's budget, but that the town who gives the Board of Ed its budget apparently has plenty of funds and apparently is entertaining giving those to the city of Hartford instead of its own residents is unconscionable. The fact that this bailout also bails out the MDC is even more unnerving. As many of you know, the MDC is not a friend of the town of Weathersfield. One need not look any further than the Weathersfield Cove to see how they have treated us over the last 50 years. Now, when an MDC member town mismanages its funds, the MDC looks to us and other member towns to bail them out. I don't agree with that anymore than those other member towns agreed with bailing us out over the last 50 years when it came to the remediation the sewage dumps into the Cove. I did not see those towns lining up to stop the sewage overflows and offering their tax dollars to help us, and the MDC offered their tax to help us, and the MDC come up with the difference, in fact, it wasn't until a lawsuit was threatened that the MDC actually decided to do something. And in a 10-year capital improvement plan, they put removal of discharges from the Cove. I think we're over 10 years, and I think those discharges still have not been put in place. The MDC should have some type of mechanism to account for member towns defaulting on their payments. Looking for other member towns to solve their problems isn't right. As it is, we already subsidize Hartford's water bill, and if anyone knows how we pay our water bill in this town, you can ask the town manager for that information, it has nothing to do with consumption. I just find it so ironic that when called upon, we called upon the MDC to stop sewage overflows, they ignored our request for years on end, now they want our money to bail them and Hartford out. Money, I might add, that could benefit a lot of other programs in this town. With that said, I realize the budget crisis we face, I also realize the Board of Ed's role in this regard. My concern is the fact that Weathersfield tax dollars are not available to fund a lacrosse program at the high school, but might be, and again, I use the word might be, available to bail out Hartford. That is not okay with me, members of my board, or for that matter, many residents of this town. The fact that no decision has been made yet means there is still the possibility that Weathersfield will be bailing out Hartford. I would like to make sure regardless of what happens, that possibility never exists. The resolution that is to be voted on tonight ensures that. Anything but a yes vote in favor of that resolution means you are still open to the idea that somewhere, somewhere down the line, Weathersfield tax dollars will be paying for that water bill, and that I don't support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Other folks wishing to speak on the resolution for the MDC this evening? Cindy?
Good evening, I'm glad I came tonight so I could hear what you had to say at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Mayor, I appreciated that, but I did still want to come up and speak and give my opinion, by the way, Cindy's always 119, 200 Highway.
Thank you.
Kind of took that for granted, but I'm here tonight to let council know that my family strongly opposes assisting the city of Hartford with their water bill. When we have things, things in our own town that we need to be taking care of, before council even considers taking money out of our contingency fund to give to Hartford, we should use that money to replace the turf at Weathersfield High School and fund the lacrosse program for the high school. The turf is six years past its expiration, and because it is, we are putting our athletes at risk. What council needs to realize is because the turf is past its expiration, when an athlete hits the turf, it's like hitting concrete. Last year, at the beginning of the football season, one of our quarterbacks, Craig Elliott, hit his head so hard on that turf that he spent the rest of the game vomiting and ended up with a very serious concussion. The concussion caused Craig to miss the entire season, except for the very last game, and I don't even think he really got to play too much the last game. This should not be happening, our children should come first before we help the city that is filled with officials who mismanaged, mismanaged their city. As far as the lacrosse program, the money that was originally asked for by the Board of Ed was a small portion of their budget. It is not right that we cannot offer the children of Weathersfield the same opportunity that our surrounding towns offers theirs. Lacrosse is an up-and-coming sport where many children are receiving scholarships to play at different colleges. Why aren't we offering our children the same? It's not fair. My husband and I were there the first night Mr. O'Connor offered the program, and it was standing room only, and it was great to see so many kids who wanted to get involved in that sport. The more sports we offer in Weathersfield, the better off our children and our community will be. I just want to share a little bit of information that I found out from a few contractors that have worked in the city of Hartford about how things run when it comes to the MDC. It's been told to me through different sources that when a building is abandoned in Hartford, that it takes years, years before the water is finally shut off. Multiple contractors have told me, when they walk into these buildings, they're, they view them as swimming pools. In other words, they're walking in and the basements are filled with water. And I can give you addresses, one of them is on Coventry, and the other one's on Vine Street, and their water bill was a total of $17,000. And the reason why that happened is because the city did not, did not shut down the water quick enough. I was also told by one of these contractors that there was a water leak report over on Keeney, water leak reported over by Keeney Park that I guess was managed by American Golf, and because that water leak was not taken care of for over two and a half years, I believe their water bill was a tune of about $25,000, and American Golf is gone, they're not managing Keeney Park anymore, so who's getting stuck paying that bill? Why should the Weathersfields of residents, Weathersfield residents and surrounding towns have to pay for the mismanagement of Hartford officials? I can appreciate being a good neighbor, but not when my, my neighbor is not taking care of his or her house. I could almost guarantee if we asked the city of Hartford for a listing of all the abandoned buildings, and we check if the water was turned off, 90% of them would not be. Why don't, why don't we ask them for a listing of all the houses or the buildings that have, have water leak reports, and ask them to see what the follow-up is on, on those, because they're not being filed up on. We should be using this money in the contingency fund to pay for our turf and the lacrosse program, and not to bail out the city of Hartford. Put, put our town and our children first and not miss, not miss the mismanagement of Hartford. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. David, I think you were coming up.
Hi, good evening, David DeCarly, 7 Monticello Drive, and again, I also thank you for your opening clarifying statement, but I wanted to add a couple pieces about the money, numbers that were floated about. A few months ago, Hartford's mayor came to Weathersfield and the surrounding towns in an effort to gain support about his inherited financial tale of woe. Mayor Montanari started the meeting by introducing Mayor Bronin, and then went on to add that you specifically had not been an advocate for cutting a check to Hartford. There is an agenda item here where we can vote, where you can vote to prevent Weathersfield from giving the city of Hartford, $650,000 is the term, the number I had heard, to assist in paying their water bill. Perhaps after tonight's meeting, we can stand by that statement that we will not be cutting a check to Hartford. This meeting tonight and the people speaking out against bailing Hartford out in any capacity reminds me of the movie Groundhog Day. The fact that we're still talking about this issue means that you may all still actually be contemplating bailing out Hartford. So I wanted to talk a little bit about some numbers, $650,000, let's talk about that number, and what that quantity represents for just a minute. There are currently 26,668 people living in the town of Weathersfield, the town council could give every citizen $24.37 from that money. Imagine if you will, Mayor Montanari standing at the steps of the town council building here and handing out $24.37 to everybody, it would just be non-stop. There are currently 11,204 homes in Weathersfield, the town council could cut every home a check for $58 that we could put toward our own water bill that just arrived this month, in fact. Alternately, you could drop the mill rate from 38.54 by one and a half mills, absorbing the difference in that revenue by the $650,000 that was proposed, or is being proposed to be sent to Hartford. Imagine the hero status you all could have if you told the town you've actually dropped the mill rate without raising our assessments. This money could be used to pay for the re-turfing of Coton Field, which has been mentioned before, it's been estimated to cost the town $800,000. 81% of that would be covered from the $650,000 estimated to send to the city of Hartford. When the turf is eventually deemed unsafe and unusable, where will that emergency fund come to replace it when the town council is faced with an onslaught of angry residents? The state of Connecticut has short, shortened the educational cost savings, the ECS funding, you've seen that in the papers, to towns across Connecticut. Wouldn't it be responsible for us to prepare for those cuts in budget ourselves with the foresight of keeping the $650,000 of Weathersfield taxpayer money in Weathersfield? Additionally, from an educational standpoint, Weathersfield could hire 10 to 12 new teachers just from that money alone, reducing class sizes, supporting our English to second language learners, other support staff, or help pay for some educational outplacement costs. There's also been recent proposals by the governor, as he looks to say, "I'm not raising taxes, but what I'll do is I'll shift some of the burden to the towns," so that the towns can help fund some of the pension funds for the educational contracts and union pensions. He won't raise taxes, but if the town of Weathersfield and other towns have to help support some of that pension fund money, that's going to come from our taxes, so our taxes will go up. We might want to be prepared for that as well. So in summary, MDC will get their money one way or another. They weren't there for us when the Cove, as Mr. O'Connor mentioned, was a mess, and now they want us there when Hartford can't pay its bill. Keep Weathersfield money in Weathersfield, keep Weathersfield tax dollars in Weathersfield, vote in favor of the resolution to prohibit the town from spending our money in this way. I don't want to hear about bailout money anymore, because then I really will feel like I'm living in Groundhog Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Other folks, yes, up front, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Hi, my name's Casey White, I live at 91 Center Street. This is my first town council meeting in Weathersfield, so it's nice to see this happening. I read the resolution, and I'm in favor of it, I don't think this is the time or place to be contributing to emergency budget happenings in Hartford, but as a resident of this town, I do feel like we benefit a lot from that city that we don't give back, and so I do want to follow up and follow town news more, and think of ways that we can contribute to Hartford and be a partner with them, as a separate town, but also as someone in, in the region, like, a lot of us work there, my child went to daycare there, I know that the schools there are terrible, everyone knows that, the, the roads are terrible, like, people in Hartford don't have a lot of the benefits that people in suburban towns have. So, I am here to say that while I don't think this is the, the moment to do that, and I'm in favor of this resolution, I think the MDC needs to work out their own budget issues with Hartford, but I am in favor of partnering with Hartford in certain ways in the future, because I think that will benefit everyone in the region, including Weathersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome for the first time. Nice job. Yes?
Hi, Kristi Salters, Pedno, 15 Fairmont Street. I wanted to echo something that the, the previous speaker said. I think that many people in town would agree that we don't want our tax money going to Hartford directly. However, I keep hearing speakers come up in these meetings, in the, the meeting that Luke Bronin held earlier, a couple of months ago, and talking about this idea of cutting a check to Hartford. I think it's really important to clarify that I was at that meeting with Mayor Bronin, and at no point did he talk about us cutting a check to him. In fact, Mayor Montanari got up and said he was not in favor of that, and then Mayor Bronin got up and said, "He's not in favor of that either, that's not an argument that he's making." So, when people come up and say, "Let's not cut a check to Hartford, let's not cut a check to Hartford," I think it's a straw man argument, I don't think that's actually what anyone's saying. In fact, the two things that I heard from Mayor Bronin was that he wanted us to support the state fully funding the Payment in lieu of Taxes program, which is the program that would pay for non-taxable land, which frankly, also benefits Weathersfield if that was fully funded, so it would help us with our budget problems. And he also talked about regionalization of services, so he talked about the ideas that there are some things that we duplicate across the region that we don't need to duplicate. Obviously, that would be a longer debate and conversation about what things we should duplicate, because they're very important to our town and to our town character, and what things we shouldn't duplicate, but both of those proposals are things that would help Weathersfield be sustainable in terms of our budget. So I think it's important not to lose that in this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. In the, hang on, David, there's one in the back. I won't forget you, Dave.
I'm Ryan Brazzi, 116 Charter Road. I'm a freshman at Weathersfield High School, I'm on the football team, the swim team, I play lacrosse, well, I'm going to play lacrosse for the club team, I'm on the youth advisory board, and I'm an honor student, and I can tell from experience that it's not fun hitting the ground on the turf field. All it takes is one tackle, and your hands and forearms are already scraped up from turf burn. Out of my years of playing football, I have noticed that the harder you hit, the less it hurts, but that doesn't apply to when you hit the field, it hurts pretty bad. I know that football might not be a career for me later in the future, but I'd like to enjoy my three years left, I don't want to spend it on the sidelines because of injury due to the turf. I can speak for all my teammates, ones here and ones not, that because every, or, and for every athlete, from varsity to mighty mites that have played on this field, we have all been, like, scraped up or hit from, or even walked away with serious forms of turf burn, and just by changing the turf, we can make games safer and more fun to play. For every athlete, we can make, we love the game and we don't want to change our style of play or limit ourselves because of the unsafe condition to our home field. Thank you.
Thanks, fellas, appreciate it, and thank you for representing our town. There's a woman, I think, had her hand up earlier, Toni. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Susan Neep, I'm not a resident of Weathersfield, I am a resident of East Hartford, the former mayor of East Hartford, and president of the Federation of Connecticut Taxpayer Organizations, and I'm here to commend each and every one of you who has proposed this resolution, which should be, and I'm going to make sure it is, sent to should be, and I'm going to make sure it is, sent to every member town, and I suggest every town in the state of Connecticut, of which we have 169. The reason I say that is because we, as individuals, pay our MDC bill. We pay also through the towns, and state taxpayers pay as well because the state of Connecticut, of course, uses the MDC. That having been said, and hopefully this will be passed unanimously, because I would assume that no elected legislator, local legislator, would vote to support Hartford as opposed to supporting their constituency here in the town of Weathersfield. I think, though, a lot of Hartford's problems that were self-created, that is very obvious, and to the comment by Mr. Young, the majority of us, you, we in the town of East Hartford and nearly every town in the state of Connecticut, 70% of our assessed value, our taxes are based on 70% of the value of our home in our assessments. In Hartford, it is 32. That having been said, for an, an example, Mr. Bronin's home is, has a value of 523, I'm rounding up, his home, and his assessed value is 168. That basically is 32%, not 70% as it would be if he were living here in Weathersfield or even in East Hartford, which is a distressed municipality. As such, his taxes are roughly $8,500, significantly different than if he were living in the town of Weathersfield, where you would be digging in to these folks' taxes to pay for what is being proposed by the MDC. The MDC also, as an entity, I think we have to recognize that the chairman of the MDC is under scrutiny now to determine if, in fact, he can remain as chairman, is he, in fact, a resident of the city of Hartford. As it relates to the MDC, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at their bills. We have. And, um, I'm sorry? Oh. And they are paying their lawyers significant fees. I don't know why they have so much legal work that they, we are financially supporting. But I had asked Mr. Bronin and his various departments within Hartford to post as the comptroller, Mr. Lembo, who is a transparency advocate, obviously, and where he has asked that all the quasi-public agencies put on the web information similar to what the state of Connecticut has, which has been rated as the best transparency website in the state of Connecticut. I brought this up at a meeting that Mr. Bronin was at, I think it was in Bloomfield, and asked under, you know, "Do I have to go to FOI to get this information?" You, as a member town, may wish to send a similar request to the MDC and also to the city of Hartford. Because if the city of Hartford is looking for a bailout and recognizing that of the 169 towns in the state of Connecticut, we, as property owners, pay between 80 and 85% of our property taxes for personnel-related expenses. So who better should know what the city of Hartford is paying its personnel? I'm not saying the personnel may not be worth the amount of money, but, but we certainly should know. And there's another thing that we have to fact to, factor in to all of this as it relates to the MDC. What is coming down the road has been a proposal by Mr. Malloy, Governor Malloy, and that is that we pick up the pensions of the, of the teachers. We are now paying pensions for teachers that are well over $200,000, coming up to close to $300,000. So those, that's something that we are going to have to pay as taxpayers in addition to this proposal as it relates to the MDC. Hartford needs to get its house in order. It's been under a federal indictment, and of course, you know all of that. So if they have problems, Mr. Bronin is going to have to solve those problems. He should not be looking for tax, taxpayers, help from taxpayers in East Hartford. He should not be looking for help from taxpayers in Weathersfield. Mr. Malloy, same thing, Governor Malloy, he is looking for assistance from East Hartford and from Weathersfield. Again, congratulations to you, whoever was the author, drafted this proposal. We too, the Federation, has a resolution that we are hoping bodies such as yours will pass. I, I won't get into it now because I understand this is a public comment on your MDC referendum, but the caption is "Resolution to Reject Governor's Proposal Regarding Teachers' Pensions and to Promote Full Transparency and Legislative Approval of All State Public Sector Union Contracts." Because that's another thing to factor in here. Thirteen state labor union contracts sit on the table today. They are being negotiated. We have no idea what the cost of that will be. We do know that our state's debt is $74.3 billion. $74.3 billion. That state, that, that debt is driven by state retiree pensions and health care, and that totals $14.9 billion. This is what we owe. Teachers' retirement, $13.2 billion, again, we owe. State post-employment health and life, $18.9 billion, and teachers' post-employment health and life, $3.0 billion. Those, along with the bonded debt that we have, total $74.3 billion. So I, I think that you have to encompass all of these issues when you vote on this matter tonight. You are here for one purpose, and that is protect your residents here in the town of Weathersfield. You have absolutely no obligation to Hartford. Thank you.
David?
David Krug, 149 Broad Street. I'm, I'm thrilled at, at this new proposal, I don't know what you call it, and I'm hoping it passes. This is something I've been talking about for a while, the MDC, and as Dan mentioned a while ago, we, we don't have a good history with MDC as far as the Cove. They, they, they're not, they're not nice to us. So we had that whole ordeal, and now we got this ordeal, and where the last speaker was correct when she says Hartford's looking for someone to bail them out. And if we put money in this reserve fund, we're going to be bailing them out. By not putting it in, we're putting the state on notice. The state on notice, and to be honest, the state has got to bail Hartford out because there's no way around it. Hartford cannot pay their bills. It's just too much money, and unless the state does something, and, and I hear that they're, they're going to give more funding to, to the cities, which some people are against, but I, I support because we don't, I, to be honest, I don't want Hartford going bankrupt because that's the only, that's the only alternative. Hartford will go bankrupt if they cannot pay their bills. So by us not enabling Hartford to, to, to remain in debt a, a, and have others bail them out besides the state, you know, we're putting, we're telling the state, "Hey, state, the towns are not going to help Hartford. The towns are not going to help Hartford. So unless you want to do something about Hartford, you're, Hartford's going to go bankrupt." And a previous speaker, before her, spoke about the pilot program, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, and that's something I knew a little bit about. And she's saying, "Oh, well, you know, if, if Hartford got all the money for Payment in Lieu of Taxes, they're not going to get that money. The state does not have that money. There's no way they can give Hartford all, all those millions of dollars for, uh, uh, nonprofit, uh, not, untaxable property. There's no way." So Hartford knows they're not going to get all that money, and Mayor Bronin even said that. He says he knows Hartford is in debt, and he's not expecting them to, Hartford to get all that money. So the money's not going to come from Payment in Lieu of Taxes. And, and I knew that with, with, with the way the state's doing right now, and I wrote some quick notes before I came up here. So I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm really proud of you guys for, for this proposal, for not having this reserve fund. I didn't expect it. I thought, you know, "Oh, well, you might have, might have to deal with some legal issues." You still might, you know? MDC might not be happy about that. They'll, might get their lawyers out, but I, I think this is the right move. You know, we, we, we don't want to put ourself in a bad position, especially since Hartford, I mean, Weathersfield is going to be getting less money from the state. We're, we're, our, our property tax is probably going to go up anyway despite this MDC issue. So I'm, I'm very happy with this, uh, this, it's not a bill, what is it called? A motion. Very happy with this motion, and thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to speak on this resolution?
My name is Barbara Rue. I live at 79 Main Street. I think the fact that we have to have a resolution like this is symptomatic of a significant problem with the MDC. The MDC is a quasi-public-private nonprofit organization created by state charter, and I think it's time to look at that charter. I think the MDC has become a political fiefdom, and I think the fact that, that Bill de Bella is being investigated is a step forward. I think the MDC is overstepping in a variety of ways. They have some crazy plan to develop the airport. They're a water company, not a development company. There was a question about some land they sold in Glastonbury, which is not a member town. Glastonbury got a deal. At whose cost? Our cost. So I think that one of the things that should happen is that we should look, seriously look to our legislators and ask them to take a long, hard look at MDC and how they operate, what their budgets are, and what they're spending their money on. One of the comments that people have made to me is that MDC has new trucks every year. Maybe they don't have new trucks every year, but wouldn't it be nice to know? Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. There was someone else that raised their hand. George?
I happen to be related to the last speaker, so you all know that anyway. And I'm often at odds with her. I'm not, I'm not completely at odds with her on this particular case, but I do march to the tune of a different drummer, and you all know that, and I had been part of my life. That was something I learned before anybody in this room besides me was born, about thinking for yourself and don't be afraid, and I'm not. What I hear from many of the speakers is an "us via them" mentality, and I have a hard time looking at my country, our country, as us versus them. I think this is something our country's being plagued with right now from Washington. It's us via them. And I, I really find that very, very unsettling. I hear a lot of conversation about the things in life that are required. I see desires for luxury vis-à-vis desires for needs. I'm not against sports, I'm not against, well, I did take a big, strong stand on against turf many, many years ago, and I think there were a number of us who predicted that this was going to be the court-washing disaster, and it seems to be turning out that way. But a couple of points that were raised, Dave just raised a very interesting point about not wanting Hartford to go bankrupt. And that's, that apparently is a distinct possibility, and I'm taking out a few of these words here and there before I forget them and look at my own notes. I don't understand all of the fine details on this proposal. Tonight's the first night I've seen it. I think I've got other things that interest me or worry me more than what's happening in this town. I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else, but if I gotta pay, I gotta pay. Because this is part of my country. If I'm blessed to be able to pay more, so be it. I'll have to do it. And to differentiate, I think, I have a, it's, it's maybe only coming, becoming a bit clear to me at the moment that 30% vis-à-vis, vis-à-vis the 70% tax assessment for determining taxes. If Weathersfield were as poor as Hartford, and if Hartford goes bankrupt, one day we may very well be that poor. Nobody's going to be able to pay the 70%, and we're going to have another Detroit on our hands, in my opinion. So I don't feel particularly bad about not understanding all of the details. Government at all levels acts on stuff they know little or nothing about, like practically everything that's happening in Washington. We worry about taxes here, us versus them. I worry about what the wall is going to cost. What I do know is Hartford is our neighbor. And when neighbors get into trouble, I think we've got to try to pitch in and help keep them out of trouble because ultimately the impact will fall back on us. We will not escape unscathed. Do they have problems? Yes, they do. Do we have problems? Yes, we do. Is Hartford always very effective and incompetent all of the time? No. Is our local, are our local officials, have they always, over the years, been competent and effective in everything they do? You know, and I know, that's not the case. So that's part of government, and that's the way the world bounces, you know? And I'm not generally a proponent on government spending, but if Hartford sinks, we sink, and I know that. And I said some of this already, I'm a little out of sequence here, but that's all right. You have to bear with me. I'm not for or against the proposal and the problem that the council is attempting to address. I'm not for or against it. I don't know enough about it. But what I do want to urge you is you think your way through it. Think your way through what's happening. What are the long-term implications of what you're doing? I don't usually come up here with a newspaper article and say, "Hey, this is what I'm going to talk about." I try to plan my thoughts fairly carefully, but I got a few things that I wanted to comment At the meeting with Bronin, who, and I did not attend that meeting, I've, I've got this other little project that keeps me pretty busy at home, you know, and I can't, when we have council meetings and I've had this little visitor around, I just can't get out of my chair at night, so I don't go and I don't pay attention, but anyway. The, the mayor apparently said that he shares the Republican opposition to being billed on additional costs to the member towns. I'd like to suggest that instead of opposition, that you share Republican concerns, and they may be very valid. I don't have a problem with that at all. They may be very valid, vis-à-vis saying that is the problem, which we may, we, you may, we may, I don't know who may know, but you may not know all of the details. Another comment that caught my attention in the newspaper article from the rare reminder, oh, he's one of the big enemies of our country, right? I say that tongue-in-cheek, Mark. Make sure you notice that. The, the mayor described certain aspects of this thing as adversarial. And I kind of raised a flag. I don't know where the adversarial part comes in. I don't know what you're arguing about. Maybe it's important, maybe it's not. But the thing that I'm 100% in support of is the mayor's final comments, that his preference would be to work a little more closely or more closely with MDC. Maybe you have done all of that already since the newspaper article came out, and then the rest of the time where I've been busy doing a lot of other stuff. But this is, this would be my, my urgent counsel to this counsel, is think your way through it, work your way through it, and in the final analysis, if that has to be done, it has to be done. But in the final, again, if Hartford goes bankrupt and a couple of people have mentioned that possibility, that certainly is going to have a very, very negative effect on the town of Weathersfield. That you can rest assured. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anyone else on this particular resolution? Public comment? Yes? How are you?
My name is Carolyn Fazina. I live at 19 Fairmont Street. I also would like to thank you for putting forward this resolution. I would just like to make mention of a few things before the vote takes. I would just like to make mention of a few things before the vote takes place. I imagine that the word, and I, and I might not be completely clear on it, but I would imagine the word contingency fund means that money set aside for the town, in case something happens, will have money to fund a repair or some large problem we may come up to in the future. And I wonder if we give this money to Hartford, would we still have money set aside if something were to happen and one of, in the town? I say that because I know it's come up at several meetings, I'm active in the school district, I'm also co-chair of the Weathersfield School Parent Council, I've talked to the superintendent and assistant superintendent, the chair of the Board of Ed, several times about the condition of our public schools, and namely our elementary schools. You know, we just did a large reservation, renovation at the high school, but there's several schools at, at the elementary school level that are in need, real need, of repair or replacement. This hasn't come up yet for much discussion publicly, but that is in our future. So until that happens, we may have schools that have large repairs that need to happen, and I would like to make sure that the town has that money set aside for something like that. I also know that pretty much every year, there's a capital improvement budget that's set up by the school district on things that the different schools that need to get on a list to be improved or replaced, and almost, and every year that impro, that budget is slashed, and things are taken off that budget. We have schools with faulty windows, we have bad air conditioning, we have a couple of schools with add-on classrooms that are way, way past their lifespan, that aren't efficient, and I don't know if they're not safe, but they're certainly heading in that direction. So we here at Weathersfield, I feel, have some issues that we still haven't addressed that this money, if it was needed, should be set aside for. I'd also like to say that I know that the Board of Ed has, Ed has, this year has been working very hard on a budget that does not show a large increase to the taxpayers. It's difficult this year because state funding is disappearing. So they're just working really hard at sustaining programs and teachers and class sizes where they are, with no new incentives or programs slated for the new year. And that's disappointing to me, but if we're doing that and we're working that hard, but then going to turn around and hand some, however it happens, give some of the money that we have set aside to another city, however important that is, I just feel like that's just not a good use of our money. I would like to say I am personally a very generous person with my time, and we are, as a family, are generous sometimes with our money as well, but I certainly wouldn't be able to be as generous if my own house wasn't taken care of, and that's what I sort of feel like right now. Like, we have to make sure that Weathersfield is appropriately taken care of, we do have some large things that are coming up that we need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on, and I don't think that this is, should be one of them, so I appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen. Other public comment on the resolution? Yes?
Michael Castanelli, twenty-four Elm Street. My house is my responsibility. I have a mortgage, I have water bill, electric bill. If I don't pay them, I lose my house, my lights get shut off, and my water gets shut off. Apparently Hartford's not doing their share and taking care of their problems. I don't care if their water gets shut off, not my problem, not my circus, not my monkey. You people have been elected to take care of this town. This town. If you divert funds from anything other than from this town to assist another town, that's a violation or a misuse of town funds, and I think you should be recalled if you do that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this resolution? Rich? Sorry. Go ahead, Rich is deferring to you, then, then, Rich, go ahead.
It's Matthew Outwater, it's four hundred Hartford Avenue. So I've, I heard a lot, I, I think I agree with George on the, you know, we're all in this together, I don't think we're islands, so I guess I would tread with caution. I don't know that necessarily setting aside a contingency is a good idea, but I, I actually would like to speak in favor of water. You know, the, there's infrastructure associated with this, as I understand it, so the idea is that contingency needs to be put in place in case Hartford defaults. So the idea that this is a bailout is a little bit of a misconception, I think. The idea is we're putting money aside in the idea that if Hartford were to default, that MDC can still get funding for its infrastructure program, which if you, I live on the Cove, so I'm pretty aware of the way that failing infrastructure can affect Weathersfield. So if they, and I don't know what those infrastructure programs actually entail, so you guys might have more detail about what exactly they intend to do with the money they're trying to, to get through the bond, so that they can, but if we don't have a contingency that, and they don't do infrastructure problems, are we going to be on the downside of, say, water quality issues vis-à-vis Flint, Michigan? So we want to make sure that what we do, you know, because we feel like we're insular somehow to the town to the north of us, we're not doing, you know, in spite of ourselves, because we're pretty connected, we're pretty close, my mother grew up in Hartford, she moved to Weathersfield and, you know, went to Weathersfield High, like, people transfer between these towns, we're all the same people. So I worry that in New England, we're very insular townships. I think regionalization probably has some benefits, I think Luke, Mayor of Hartford, has some, has his hands full up there. I don't know that making declarations that state, we will under no circumstances do X or Y is necessarily wise, so I don't think we necessarily want to go along with whatever the MDC proposes, they obviously have their own self-interest as an organization involved. But I guess I, I, you know, agreeing with George would say there's, there's caution to be taken here about how we proceed forward. I personally would like to see Hartford succeed. I think if Hartford fails, it harms us a lot more than, you know, a little bit of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we put aside as contingency in case of its failure. So that's kind of what I want to add.
Thanks. Rich?
Good evening, Rich Roberts, fifteen Lantern Lane. I'm not going to beat the dead horse here, I think most of the points have already been made. I guess I want to thank the mayor for his clarification at the beginning, but I want to kind of more fully understand that the clarification is that there have been conversations, dialogues, and discussions about doing something that will eliminate the need for Weathersfield to fund the reserve. But as we stand here now, three months away, less than three months away from the date on which Weathersfield Town Council has to set its budget, the only certain thing is that the MDC has passed its budget containing a reserve requirement, that Weathersfield put in six-hundred-and-fifty-something thousand dollars in the second half of the year in the event Hartford fails to do so. And in reliance on that budget with that reserve in it, which is the only thing that is certain, definite, and in place as we stand here tonight, you know, the MDC sold bonds, so people have relied on that. I understand that, you know, there will be conversations, dialogues, and discussions about maybe a better way to solve this problem, but I don't want to downplay the fact that all of those things at this point seem to be speculative, you know, relying on the legislature to either revise the MDC's charter, relying on the legislature to pass the governor's budget, which was characterized as dead on arrival, or, or some combination of the two that will relieve us of the obligation that as we stand here right now is a fact. The other thing that, that, you know, I think is worth mentioning is that, you know, how we got to the point of having the reserve put in place, you know, it seemed stunning that the MDC would never have considered the fact that Hartford was in financial trouble until about a month before they had to sell, you know, half a billion dollars' worth of bonds, and had to put this reserve in place. I mean, it, it's been kind of widely known for, for a long time that Hartford is in financial straits. Maybe they don't deliver the current down in Old Saybrook, but, I mean, at least those of us here in the greater Hartford area were fully aware that there was a possibility, you know, that Hartford would not have cash on hand. I think one other thing that bears mentioning is that, you know, it's not, I, I don't think it's going to be a case of Hartford running out of money because it doesn't collect any taxes. If Hartford doesn't pay the ad valorem portion of its MDC bill, it will be because it chooses not to pay it. It will be because it chooses to pay someone else. You know, maybe someone who scammed them out of a million dollars on a soccer stadium, maybe somebody who wants a hundred-million-dollar baseball stadium, maybe they need a little money toward a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar hockey rink. I mean, there, there are so many demands on Hartford's money, you know, that are not our problem, they're not our doing, that I, I just find it unconscionable and a breach by them of their fiduciary duty as a fellow member of the MDC to basically pay your fair share. I understand that they have difficulties, but I think keeping the sewage flowing out of buildings and not putting it into the streets and the Cove is one of those things that should be at the top of their list of things to pay for, not something to pass the hat to all the neighboring towns just because we've been prudent and have set aside reserves over the years. So I, I encourage you to support this resolution. You know, I, I know, as the mayor said, that, you know, there are discussions on alternative ways to resolve this issue. You know, I'm skeptical, I guess I, if it was a sunnier day, I'd be cautiously optimistic, but as we stand here now, you know, just kind of watching the budget up at the, you know, the state legislature, I'm skeptical that there's going to be, you know, tremendous amounts of money either in the other neighboring towns or at the state level to solve everybody's problem. And, you know, it's not a case of writing a check to Hartford, you know, on the town of Weathersfield account, but it, it's going to come from us one way or another. And, you know, my fear is that to avoid having to satisfy the reserve requirement, we're going to kind of get it, get to the same point through the back door, you know, could it be, you know, instead of the eight towns, the MDC paying, the hundred-and-sixty-eight towns other than Hartford pay, could the MDC be able to borrow more, you know, to cover Hartford's shortfall? And then we, you know, end up having to pay the interest on that and the principal back whenever they get around to it. So, you know, while I think it's, it's great that there are conversations trying to find a different resolution, you know, as we stand here on February twenty-first or whatever it is, the only thing that is in place as a fact right now is that we're on the hook for the reserve requirement, and if we don't take a firm stand on saying, you've got to find another solution because we're not going to pay, we're just going to end up paying. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, and I will clarify those when we get to the resolution. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this resolution? One last call for public comment on this resolution only. Last call. Okay, declare that, hearing closed. Any other regular comment before we move into the agenda? Yes, in the red.
Counsel and visitors and residents, my name is Elizabeth Smith, I live on Lancaster Road, and I've been in Weathersfield since I was three years old, so that's, you know, two or three years now. I mean, I do agree that we should oppose this, this res, you know, resol, to put the resolution through. I'm here to speak about something that has bothered me for a while. I watch the town council meetings, zoning board of appeals, zoning, planning and zoning board of ed, and they all seem to have one thing in common. I have to have the volume of the TV up to about forty or fifty. Now, when you live in a private home, that's one thing. When you live in an apartment, and I've lived in several apartments in the course of my lifetime, and it's just, it's, you can't do that. It's not right. So I don't know what the issue is. Sometimes also, it can be hard to hear people. I remember a teacher I had at the high school, who said you need to, and I heard this in a, a movie called Sister Act, it says you need to be able to sing or speak so that the people in the back of the room can hear you. And you have to speak clearly, and, and, you know, to the best of your ability. We have a lot of immigrants in the country, and they have a, English is a second language, and that also impacts things, but regardless, you need to at least speak loud enough so people can hear you. So I, I've had a little issue with that, and I don't know whether it's because these aren't set up right, or yours aren't set up right. I think it would be nice to consider that, I'm five-two-and-a-half, so these are quite good for me, I mean, level-wise. But we have some people who are six foot, six foot plus, however tall they are, and they don't always, they're not always able to speak right into the microphone, therefore it might be adjustable, an adjustable microphone might be helpful. I don't know whether it's just me, or whether other people have brought this to the attention of anyone in town. But I just think it would be helpful if, when people come to speak, that A, they get the boards or the commissions in the councils, undivided attention, and also that they're able to present their material adequately. I have the same trouble when I listen, when I watch the channel fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and there are other programs. I, I had to finally turn off what appeared to be a wonderful concert by the high school chorus, or choir, or whatever the group was, because A, you couldn't understand them, but more importantly, you couldn't hear them. And the same thing with some of the younger grades concerts that they put on in the spring or in the fall, you know, or the Christmas concert. So I think it's either the equipment, or the equipment at the high school or wherever, but I think just something needs to be done about it, and, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Before we go on with additional public comment, I checked, I asked the author of the resolution if we could move the resolution forward in light of the crowd here for that item, so we are going to take the liberty of taking the resolution regarding the MDC out of order so we can have some discussion, because we have some pieces that we want to discuss about it, and I think you're interested in hearing that rather than keep you here through our normal options. So with that being said, I would like to move to B one, C one, if I got the right thing. And I think, Mike, you're going to introduce it. Let you do that.
Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, I think you can just introduce the resolution because of the language we've read it, so.
Okay, I just want to introduce the resolution concerning MDC's imposition of reserve fund. And there was copies available, I'm not going to, it's two pages, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I think most people here have read it, and I'll maybe make a comment.
Sure. Do you want to do that before you get a second, or you want to get the second?
Oh, we'll get a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, and then I'll just make a comment on why it was kind of put forward. There was some interest in putting Hartford's MDC payment of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in our budget in previous conversations, so several of us put the resolution forward to make sure that it's not in the budget and it doesn't get paid to Hartford. We don't think the MDC, or doesn't get paid on behalf of Hartford. We don't think the MDC has the authority to do that. And I want to just echo one of the speakers. If Hartford doesn't pay their MDC bill, it means that they decided to pay, to do it, do something else with it. And Weathersfield pays their bills, I feel Hartford should pay their water and other essentials first before they go off and spend their money on other things.
Thank you, Mike. Good. Don, do you want to make a point first?
Yep, a couple of points. I just wanted to cite the resolution. I think there's some good information, and not all of it, just a couple of pieces, and then I do have a comment. The purpose of the resolution is the town of Weathersfield opposes any amendments to the charter of the MDC, which would allow the MDC to impose additional financial obligations on the member towns or their residents, or permit additional borrowing by the MDC for any deficits resulting from the failure of the city of Hartford, to make all required ad valorem payments until such time as the MDC has exhausted the existing remedies contained in its charter. And then one other comment that's within the resolution that I think is important and of great concern is be it further resolved that the town of Weathersfield is deeply concerned that the additional levy adopted for calendar year 2017 may be a recurring event, particularly since any additional demand by MDC for funds to cover additional defaults by the city of Hartford could occur in the middle of the town's 2017-18 fiscal year. And then just my final comment is, I do support the resolution as it's been submitted. If we soften the language, it will hurt us, and it has hurt us in the past when other things have been softened at the state level. At the state level, it's likely that things will get worse, and I'm afraid that if the state is imposing and pushing down to towns some of the items that they've discussed, and I know there's varying opinions of such, but that if that happens and other communities are put into the same position where they're not able to pay because of competing interests, I think it puts us all at risk, and that we have a fiduciary responsibility to look out for our taxpayers and citizens. And so I do support the passing of this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I think we have a couple of changes we wanted to include, yes.
And I was just going to state, I also share the belief that the citizens of Weathersfield should not be asked to fund Hartford's potential failure to pay for an essential service such as sewer service, and will oppose any effort to ask Weathersfield residents to pay for those services. That being said, and I support this resolution as it's written, that being said, looking at the resolution, all it does is state what we are opposed to, and doesn't state what we want to do to fix it, or how we want to address it. And so I think the resolution should not be softened, but should go further and state that we support the efforts being made by the, our delegation at the Capitol to change the MDC charter so that this can get corrected in this budget season, and also so it doesn't repeat itself. And for that reason, again, I would support the resolution as it stands with the following, and I would move to amend the resolution to state the following. The third paragraph on the second page, rather than the way it's written, be written to say, whereas representatives of the member towns of the MDC engaged in numerous meetings and discussions with the MDC to review alternatives to the reserve fund, have resulted in proposals by the MDC to amend their charter to relieve municipalities of the use of a reserve fund. And add, whereas the governor's office has submitted effective July first, 2017, that addresses the potential default of a member municipality and prevents the requirement for a reserve fund on the remaining municipalities. And add, be it further resolved that the town of Weathersfield supports the full implementation of the alternatives presented by both the MDC and the governor's office that ensures relief on all remaining municipalities, and should work with its member municipalities as well as the Connecticut General Assembly to identify potential charter revisions which would address the structural deficiency in the manner by which the MDC funds sewer services, including but not limited to revising or replacing the ad valorem tax mechanism used to fund sanitary sewer operations at the MDC with a user-based fee based like that which is used to fund the provisions of water services. And two, allowance for the MDC to undertake borrowing if a municipality defaults on any of its ad valorem payments, which would permit it to withstand short-term revenue losses through the next budget cycle.
I would like to second that motion, and also say at the same time, I am not in favor of paying the six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and this amendment will add to it showing what the governor has proposed to the legislature, and shows our support to have the legislature make these changes so that MDC's charter can be changed, so they can get, you know, the money they need through other means as stated here within.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, on this change, which I think we should address in order. I guess I want to hear from you guys on the change.
Sure. I don't agree with the change. I think, I read some of what the legislature wants to do, and they want to actually give the MDC more power to borrow more money and put more expense on the town of Weathersfield, so I totally disagree with that amendment.
I just, I want to say that, Mike, in theory, I agree with the fact that we should be trying to offer up solutions. The problem is, is that the legislative language isn't very clear right now, and as it goes through the process, it will probably change quite a bit. So I'm very reluctant to support something that we haven't even been able to read, and we won't have a say, because it's up there, it's not down here.
Understood. Donna, you raise your hand.
No, I'm good. I echo the comments from both Counselina and Counsel Hurley. I appreciate the
Other comments?
Efforts, but.
Amy?
I'll echo my, the comments that have been said, that I also do not support funding this reserve, but I do have a bit of faith in our legislative delegation and think that they will work for the town of Weathersfield and on our behalf, and I would support this amendment.
Other comments?
And I was just, I was just going to add to that. Again, the issue is supporting, addressing the structural problem that's created by the charter. So I think, I think these changes that are proposed here clearly do it, and I think we have to give some guidance. This is just a resolution, we're telling them this is how we hope it gets addressed. But to say, it's easy to say we oppose, we're against, but you have to give some guidance as to what you're for as well, and that's why I support the amendment. And again, I'm against, so everyone's clear, I'm against paying that six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And I think everyone, my guess is everyone up here is.
So I want to just add, oh, go ahead, Mike.
So I think if we just put in that we support addressing the structural problem, that would be fine. I don't think supporting some of the legislature's actions is going to help us, I think it's going to hurt us more, because they're going to hurt Weathersfield by giving the MDC more power, like I said.
So I want to just address a couple of points that are heard in public comment before we vote on the changed amendments, and particularly with points that you made, Rich. And just echoing, and I think our town manager and I have been going to the MDC meetings with the commissioners as well as the board to discuss this issue for the last several months. We were not aware until, I think, November, that the city of Hartford had a risk of default on their second, I'm sorry, their third and fourth quarter. The first two quarters have been paid and assured to be paid. And in the learning process, without belaboring too much of the detail, it became clear to us that the charter on the MDC as a nonprofit doesn't necessarily give towns like Weathersfield that are in the membership group a voice in adjudicating a default. Obviously, this is new turf for Connecticut, it's certainly new turf for the MDC. And in those discussions, each of the municipalities that was at the table, Weathersfield included, objected clearly and strongly against the imposition of a reserve. And we had, I want to be clarified, we never used the term contingency. The ask for a reserve reflected a breakdown in their current charter that would require them to have in a reserve by the member towns sufficient resources to cover the event of a default, so they could go to bond. And this was driven by the bond issuance in November on a portion of the water project. So that's what drove this. So we came together as member towns, town managers and mayors were asked to participate. That was our first exposure to the shock of a potential impact of a default. And probably like residents that are sitting here tonight, we were somewhat shocked to learn that the capacity to pass this potential default on to the remaining towns is the only mechanism currently available to the MDC, and we don't technically get a vote on it. So the thought that we're suggesting, we're sitting here as a council, saying we do or don't want to give up this money, it's sort of a misnomer. We sat there and learned for the first time that this reserve is the only mechanism. That inspired some discussion, including some possible hiring of council, and the member towns have been in those discussions. Accelerating that forward, Jeff has led the way, along with the other town managers, at saying that the reserve component potentially impacts our town, our taxpayers, and our bond capacity by having to put aside a reserve. So we clearly are opposed to that, and we've communicated that opposition. But I will say to the MDC's credit that they have heard that objection and have begun discussion about alternatives that relieve of that option. But again, this is still a resolution that doesn't necessarily carry a tremendous amount of weight, but as you can see, some of the other member towns are coming to the table with that same dialogue, as I believe we are, and I appreciate Mr. Hurley and the other members of the council who crafted this. We were waiting to get through some of those steps, but obviously, I would have preferred to wait to see some of the more clarity than push the resolution. But having said that, I do believe that we have work left to do with the MDC to prevent the imposition of a reserve, regardless of what we say in a resolution, which carries only so much weight. I prefer to continue to be at the table with Jeff, with the MDC board and the commissioners and the other towns, and endeavoring to get these alternatives on the table. I share the skepticism, frankly, Jody, Donna, and Mike, about whether the legislature and/or the governor's office will craft something that will be satisfactory, but as compared to the alternative of simply rolling over on the reserve, I'd rather at least get the fight. And so that's where we have been at, and that's why I feel, and we've been talking with Mike Rell, who's not here, as I know he's tied up in a program tonight, about our thoughts on this, which is generally collaborative and in agreement with this resolution. So I don't think we have an objection to the attempt to put out this resolution and make it clear that the town of Weathersfield opposes the use of our reserve funds, even if it's on paper escrow and it's not a taxpayer appropriation. It's still not entirely clear to us how we would even address the reserve if we were imposed. But we still, as this moment, correct to Rich's point, only have in front of us the possibility, without change, that that reserve will be imposed, but it would be imposed under the charter. And we'd be left only with a legal challenge. So I'd rather engage in some alternatives and share the resolution's message, which is why we would support the resolution with these changes. But I do think that changes are important to communicate to the MDC that we want to be at the table partnering him on all alternatives. And those alternatives are still being discussed, they're still being reviewed, some elements of them I don't agree with, and I'm sure Jeff doesn't agree with, and we'll communicate that. But I want to be at the table crafting that, as opposed to simply saying, we have no choice but to ante up this reserve. I also want to be clear on something that, in our discussions with the MDC at the most recent meeting, I communicated to the chairman and their legal counsel that they have not done a good job explaining, in the event of remedial steps, in the event that Hartford were in fact to default, which would be a byproduct of a bankruptcy, what are the mechanisms for us to be reimbursed? So contrary to what I think is out there publicly, is that if the city of Hartford were to file bankruptcy and default on their third and fourth quarter, and these reserves had to be tapped in absence of any changes, we're entitled to recovery, but it would take time. And anybody that's filed bankruptcy, and we hope that doesn't happen for a lot of reasons, and by the way, no better evidence of the pain that could happen if Hartford files for bankruptcy than this. There's no other evidence. When I've talked about getting up here, and I don't want to give taxpayer money from Weathersfield to Hartford to bail them out, and by the way, I echo the point, he's not asking for that. But if Hartford were to file bankruptcy, here's Exhibit A of the pain that comes back to Weathersfield. Because under the municipal charter of the MDC, we do have to ante up this reserve in absence of a change, which is what we're working on. So I echo the work of Mike Hurley and Mike Rell and Jody and Donna, but I also want to continue to work on your behalf to make sure we don't ante up taxpayer money through a reserve that we may not have control of. But I also think it's a great example of if Hartford were to fail, eleven million dollars of money gets passed back to the municipal towns that are in this water project, because they have no alternative but to make themselves whole. And we can sit here all day and argue about MDC's budget and their expenses and their salaries and their cars and their trucks, and whether they're doing this, that they're doing that, or turning water off in Hartford and freezing pipes. But the reality is that they have the authority to pass this back in absence of a change. So I want to be at the table for the change, along with Jeff, who's a very capable, full-time professional. I can do it on behalf of our taxpayers, Jeff's doing it on behalf of our town. So having said that, I just want people to understand the full story, because there's a lot of misinformation out there about this. There's a lot of misinformation about bailing out Hartford, and all of that. We're not bailing out Hartford, we're faced with the realities of what Hartford faces. And if the state sees itself clear to get Hartford over this period of time, then they will not default on their water bill. And I know from talking with the mayor of Hartford, it would be the last thing he would want to do. He's not going to go pay for a sports field and all that other stuff first if they default. This would be priority one, but it is, it's not a great story. And so we need to be at the table. And I think MDC has more than represented to us and the member towns and their mayors and their town managers, that they are in this together to solve it, and that's where this language is coming from. So, you know, our changes are merely reflecting the fact that we want to continue that process while still supporting very clearly the message universally, that the use of a reserve, which is painful to our town, is not something we support, we resist to the extent that we can, knowing that we have somewhat limited power over that. So better to be working together. So, Mike?
Well, I just wanted to say something about, I guess, resisting, because the MDC's charter says that they have to go after the assets of Hartford, not Weathersfield, if Hartford defaults. So I don't think there, I think there is no legal requirement for Weathersfield to pay. So that's my position.
And again, my preference is to not answer that legal challenge. It's better for us to come up with a solution, so.
Paul, I have a quick question. Do you know that, you know, if the legislature opens up the language to the MDC charter, since that's the only way it can get changed, are those commissioners allowed to help craft? We have people that represent us up at MDC, but are they even going to be in on those legislative conversations?
Yeah, I mean, we've been told all along through these discussions that they're at the table, they were at the table with us, and these other alternatives, respective of the hearing here. Again, this is early in the stages. You know, we're going through this for the first time, and all the member towns are, and the other mayors are sitting here, like I'm sitting here, saying, we'll see, but they are indicating that the full board, the full commissioners, and obviously their bond and legal counsel are crafting this language. So the governor's section twenty-nine talks about holding back state money in the event of a default, so that assumably that fund of money would be available to make good on the ad valorem on behalf of a defaulting city, and then they would have to recapture money in a different way, which would not affect the municipalities outside of the defaulting city. So that's another alternative that's being proposed. But that's, in my mind, is a way that the governor is communicating that the reserve is not an acceptable alternative. So I'm seeing that as supportive of our position. So, you know, but again, here we are, February twenty-fourth, twenty-second, and then we've got another sixty days of discussion before we're going to know.
Do you have a bill number? You keep referencing something.
Yes, section twenty-nine point. Section twenty-nine new, effective July one. I can get, we haven't seen the bill, it was just given to us as an option that's been presented. It was sent over by council for the MDC.
I would respectfully ask them to send us the bill number. I would respectfully ask them to send us the bill number and the legislative commissioner's number assigned to it so that we all can track it as it goes through the process.
Absolutely.
I'd be very curious to see what the language is.
Again, I just want to remind people what we're saying here, Jody, is each of these mechanisms that are being introduced, we want to make sure are part of our awareness that even though we are saying very clearly uniformly with you as well that we resist the reserve, we want to continue to have discussion on all other alternatives so the reserve will not be imposed upon us as municipal leaders.
Correct. So folks in the audience, for those of you who don't know, the Connecticut General Assembly has a website, and you can take that bill number and track the language as it goes through the process. So that'll be very important for us all to know as we go forward with this.
So before we do the vote, I just want to reiterate, Mike and Jody and Donna, you choose as you wish on the vote. We hope you join us on the changes, not because we're watering this down, but because we want to have some leverage to get this right. I'm sure that our guys are going to vote positively on your resolution. So I'll say it before we vote, that, you know, we're with you on this, but we do want this leveraged. So, I mean, obviously we have the votes to get the changes without you, but I'm asking you to consider joining us on the changes because it will help us get it fixed. Whether you think we're going to get there or not, I can understand the skepticism, I share it, but I think you'll have to trust that the MDC is looking to Jeff and I to be the voice. You can certainly sit on at any meeting, but I'm sure you've got enough meetings, and we're happy to let us go through the fight. But, you know, please consider joining us on the changes because it will help us, is what I'm saying to you. Anything else? All right, so on the changes, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. And so that motion will pass with the changes. Can we vote on this resolution with the changes? We have a motion and a second with the changes, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's universal. Okay, very good. So the motion passes. So for the benefit of what you just saw, hopefully you understand, we just passed a universal agreement that is going to communicate back to the MDC that we oppose the use of a reserve, but obviously on behalf of our leadership, we're going to continue to work on behalf of the town to solve it so that reserve will not be imposed. And certainly with respect to the other issues in town, I'll close because I know some of you, and we've got some high school guys that I know have to get home and do homework, I'm sure, so I want to get you guys out of here. Oh, you got tomorrow off?
No.
No, today's.
That's all right. Is that what your son told you?
No wonder.
We heard you about all the stuff, but I direct you back to the board on that issue, so.
I did get told the bill number is 7050, House Bill 7050.
Okay.
Seven zero five oh.
Thank you. So I'll let folks leave, and then we'll go back to public comment. Thank you. Okay, while folks are clearing out, is there anybody else for public comment other than the resolution? I know we got one in, but we can go back to public comment. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to council reports, 2B, council reports. Tony?
I'm happy to report the capital improvement committee has finished their meetings with all the departments involved last Wednesday. They went through the priorities of the request. They fine tuned the listing, finalizing it. They brought it into three categories, from one to 800,000, from 800 to 900,000, and then up to 1.2 if additional funds became available. Our goal is hopefully to keep the 900,000 in the budget that we have right now, but if we have to cut back, we've got the priority to cut back to 800,000 based on the priorities they've given us. So staff is currently finalizing that listing to forward it to planning and zoning for the 824 referral. Also last week, the senior citizens advisory commission met. They're planning on May 11th, their annual program. This year it's called spring cleaning. It's going to be between 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock on May 11th at the community center. They're going to have things about how to recycle and get rid of things. They're going to have someone there, they're looking to get someone there from the transfer sta, to talk about the transfer station. Paines is supposed to be there talking about recycling. They're looking to get the library there to, if someone wants to turn in books, they'll take the books and then, you know, sell them later on. How to, they're going to have the Lions Club there to talk about turning in hearing aids or eyeglasses, and they're working on a few other things as well with recycling to bring up at that meeting.
Thanks, Tony, and thanks for the work on the capital improvement. I know it's been a long time. We offered it up. Nobody raised their hand.
You were chatting, I think.
I think you were. I know, and I came, I came back to it, you probably didn't hear me say it, but you'll get another chance, don't worry.
Not at the end, I hope. I mean, at the end also, but soon.
You want three bites of the apple, George?
No, I don't want, we get three bites of the apple. If the one is the public comment, the one is the.
Let me finish, let me finish council, let me finish council reports.
People were leaving, I didn't hear you say it's public comment.
George, we don't want you to get worked up. I'll get back to you in one minute. Let me finish council reports.
I'm going to go home and check on the TV.
Okay, we're going to try to talk louder. Other council reports? Other council reports? Okay, so let me go back to public comment, since you missed it. Public comment, Bob?
Good discussion on this MDC issue. You say it passed, I fully didn't understand that, you know, it's, I don't know why, I just didn't pick it up. Anyway, I, I saw in the paper this morning, with the state of Connecticut keeps going down, keeps cutting. I mean, we know they have to cut. But I was just reading in the paper this evening, before I came here, that they were going to reduce the tax credits on the working poor people who get small types of money. And these are the sort of people that voted for this governor, because they all figured they were going to get benefits. And now it's coming around with all the waste, with all the irresponsible spending that they have done up at the state capitol. You know, that everybody, everybody's going to be getting hit now. And unfortunately, we all paid all along the way hefty price to end up here, down in the barrel. What happened? All these great people that have come to the state of Connecticut and talked about how do this and do that, and we're going to rise, rise and rise way up there. And look where we are after we spent all this money. It must tell me that Connecticut never was a good place to invest in it, invest in it. Otherwise, the investment that went in it would have gone up, just like Hartford. The trillions of dollars that have been dumped into Hartford by the state taxpayers, the bonding commission, all that borrowed money has given the city of Hartford, what, about a 10% increase in their grand list? Did I see 360 million dollars not long ago, a couple of weeks ago, in the newspaper? Yet, all this, many of the towns all around us are reporting very little grand list increase. And I've been looking for Weathersfield's grand list report. I don't know if we have a Hartford, Hartford Current reporter who would be reporting it, but I would hope that you would be talking about it, how much that grand list pops up for us with all the success that we have. And then I read in the paper about towns are fearful and cities are hopeful. I mean, that's a great, great headline on the newspaper, you know? And we are fearful because we're going to get hammered. And the whole thing with Mr. Bronin was, the words that came out early in the whole game of the MDC was, he wasn't going to be paying his sewer tax, the last two, the last two payments. And then that sort of switched, and I think a woman had mentioned that, that he really wasn't talking about that payments being a big problem. He switched it to the state sales tax. Let's increase the state income, uh, state sales tax to 7%. That's what he was talking about. That was the main thrust of his whole discussion with all of us. I went to two different meetings, this one and then another town. He wasn't really talking about that MDC problem. He was talking about the 7% increase, or the increasing the sales tax, the 7%, and the towns and the cities were going to get 1% to put into the pilot money bucket. And I thought, okay, but if you gave him the 1%, is he going to be satisfied? Is the governor going to pull the other money that's currently in the bucket for pilot money, pull it away and put it somewhere else? And leave Mr. Bronin in the same position he's in, but now we have a 7% sales tax? You know, he wasn't very clear. And I keep coming back to that 32.2%. And I asked him right out, and he told me, oh, that's so insignificant, insignificant he should be paying. He should be paying like the rest of us if he's coming begging, begging us for money. But then, we think about all the tax abatements that the city of Hartford has handed out to different developers. Think about the Dunkin' Donuts and the, and the Dylan Stadium, and the money that they handed out, and now, I don't know where they are. Webster Bank now is going to sue the developers of the Dunkin' Donuts stadium. Mr. Bronin now is going to be collecting 10% on all the tickets, not only for the stadium, but all the amusements. I take it that must mean like the Wadsworth Anthonyum and other kinds of places in Hartford that charge people to come in. I take it he's going to be getting 10% of them, their dollars that come in, because he's Luke Bronin, and he can do that? You know, he owes extra money now for that landowner who they took his property up there, their Dunkin' Donuts stadium? I don't buy Dunkin' Donuts anymore. I refuse to even go into their store because their sign is up on that ballpark, and they got involved. I go, I go to Starbucks, but I hope they don't get involved in the stadiums. Because then I won't buy that either. But then again, we took, there was discussion tonight about fixing the problems in Hartford. I was reading in the paper, $19,000 to educate a child per year in Hartford. 19,000. That is being paid for by the few residents of Hartford that pay taxes, and I know there's a lot of businesses that pay taxes in Hartford, but also us. All of us are paying, we're contributing to that 19,000 some odd dollars, 19,342 dollars per child here in Weathersfield, what is it, 14? And look at the education differential. Talk about throwing good money, talk about throwing good money into the pot, and it disappears, it just disappears. That's what happens in Hartford. So it's a good choice to say no to Hartford. We heard tonight many times about if they go bankrupt, we're going to be in trouble. Guess what? We're in trouble being next to them as it is. What happened to our home sale prices the last year? And the Hartford Current says Newington, I think it was Weathersfield, Newington, and Cromwell, or Rocky Hill, or one of these three towns, they've been flat, per the Hartford Current only a month ago. So living next to Hartford is no joy. There's no benefits coming from it. Let it go. Let it sink. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Other public comment? George?
Once again, George A. Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle, in deference to the little gray-haired lady who can never hear, and I agree with her 100%. I've told you 100 times, nah, I'm lying. That's an alternate fact that I just used, okay? It's a, it's a fib, but you're right, you sit out here, you can't hear. And it's the design of this table. It is really lousy, and I'm not the biggest guy in the world either. I've often suggested coming here with a board so I could lay my stuff out on it. You know, sometimes you've got to get a good ergonomist, and I'd be happy to help you on that if you need it. A couple of things. One, as we talk about taxes, a thought comes through my mind, it seems as though we're talking about taxes that are in three pots, the federal government, the state government, and the town government, and that you don't go from one to the other, okay? Maybe you do, maybe you don't. But what I have a hard time understanding, the tax pile, the tax resources, regardless of who gets it, it's all coming out of our pockets, your pockets, my pockets, it's coming out of one place. So when I hear people talking about, we're going to get it from the federal government, we're going to get it from the state, we're going to get it here, we're going to, you know, it, there's a, there's a kind of a disconnect here that I have real trouble understanding. And maybe it's because I'm old and my brain doesn't work so well anymore, but whatever that is the case, anyway. I think it's something we've got to be very careful that we talk about. The, 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 the main reason I came is I wanted to share a very positive reaction to town council activities. And again, it happened to do with an article that I saw in the paper. I get a lot of my paper, when I have a chance to read it, from the New York Times, I watch various television shows, and I don't watch much Fox News. I don't even know what channel it's on, you know? But in any event, what caught my attention was Project Resistance Rally takes place at town. If you recall, prior to the election, I talked about, I made comment to the fact that all politics is local. I think I likened the taxpayers here as to the frontline soldiers, the guys that are in the trenches shooting the guns to keep the place going properly. I think that was the analogy I used, I don't know if your memory, if you can recall that, but I do. That kind of thinking came about as a life-defining experience for me when I was a young man. So, but in any event. Project Resistance Rally takes place at town hall. And at this, a point that I had arrived at even prior to reading this, every place I look, it says, get involved, get involved, get involved at a local level. Yeah, well, I'd like to get more involved at a local level, but where I am age-wise, I've got to go to bed at, you know, 9:30, 10 o'clock. Man, then I got a busy, busy day after that. But there was a call for local involvement, local involvement. And of all the problems that we've got in this country, in my humble opinion, none of them exceed what's happening in Washington, none of them. And if you guys aren't scared half to death about what's happening down there, I got to say, boy, you're a little bit out of touch with reality, and I can't imagine that that's the case. I share that not as an accusation, but as an observation. Couple of things I wanted to, to comment on. We want people to know to get involved locally, I agree with that. At issue was some of the more controversial executive orders signed by the new president, Trump's temporary trap, uh, temporary travel order. You know, I say to yourself, you watch the news and it scares you half to death. It scares you half, it scares me half to death. And I had the experience, as a young man again, of seeing where countries can go to hell in a basket with disastrous results. And boy, don't you think, I don't think that this can happen to my country. I really think it can. Another thing, of course we have to be safe, is one of the things that always gets, and our council uses, we're going to make you safe. Not a one of you here can make me safe or anybody else safe. People seem to think you're going to make me safe so nothing can happen to me. You can improve the chances of me not getting hurt, you can make the environment a bit safer, but every time I hear, I'm going to make you safe, and people say, make us safe, I think to myself, regardless of what I think to myself, that be that as it may. And then again, another thing, speakers called upon the nation's long history of accepting new immigrants, many of them fleeing economic stability. I happen to be a first-generation American. I happen to be a first-generation American. I don't think there are any original Americans here, unless you come from Indian background, which I kind of doubt. So you all came over here, and your parents came over here one time or another. And this, this hoopla that's being raised is, is, is kind of scary. Law enforcement, in other words, moving law enforcement initiatives from the federal to the, the local level, people with ICE. ICE, it's a nice acronym, the, 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 the Easterners used to call it the STASI, the Germans or Nazis used to call it the SS, I forget what the Russians called it, but it's the equivalent of the secret police, they come around in the middle of the night. And I heard this on TV tonight, on the news. People were commenting about the fact, oh, they're not going to come around in the middle of the night and just take people off and ship them away. But I'm not too sure that can't happen. But in any event, my thanks to you all for being supportive of this kind of initiative, and making and encouraging the involvement of our citizenry to protect what that flag stands for. Not what the Weathersfield thing up there stands for, but what that flag stands for. Because if that goes by the boards, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, you're going to have a bad time. And you're all young enough to will, have the opportunity to live through that bad time. My wife said, it ain't going to happen, George. Well, in four years, you can do one hell of a lot of damage. The other day, when I heard his, this presentation down in Washington or in Florida, there was a little scan, just a instant view, of a guy running across the scene in the back for about one second, carrying the nuclear bomb, the buttons that push the bomb. And I thought, oh my God, I hope they don't let him get near that thing, you know? So anyway, I, I share my thanks, I share, I, what I hope is the wisdom of all of our council in terms of recognizing that the battle starts here. And unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I'd be happy to share my thoughts publicly anytime on this kind of an event. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very kindly. Have a good evening.
Good evening, David Krueger from Frontiers and Broad Street. Since two people mentioned this, I think I, I mentioned, this has been a pet peeve of mine for, for months, and, uh, the audio/video of town council. The video now is great. Before coming here, I was watching the video on TV, and it's crystal clear, and, but for months, we were getting a cloudy or snowy image, and, and nothing was being done. I'm thinking, I, I feel like saying something, but I didn't want to dump on, on the audio/video people back there. And, and one time I asked them, I said, why does the picture look so, so snowy? And they said, oh, we, it's old equipment. Well, whatever they did, it, they fixed it. I don't know if they replaced equipment, or they got some technician in there to fix it. And, and, and if they're complaining, I'm not really complaining about anything now. The audio, it, it could be louder, but, but I remember weeks ago, the, the audio was so soft, I had to put on my, my TV on a hundred to even hear anything. Now I just have to turn on fifty, so it's, it's still a little bit low. So I don't see how they can't fix it, you know, just turn up some volume controls in there. I know they did a great job with the picture, I hope it stays this way. Occasionally, sometimes it's clear, sometimes it goes back to the lousy picture, but, uh, you know, you know, my, I don't, I don't want to say that their hearing's bad, but my hearing's a little bad myself, but, uh, but, uh, the, the auto could be a little better, and, and I don't know what the issue is. Maybe I should go back there and ask them, maybe they'll tell me that it's old equipment like they told me last time, but whatever they did with the, the picture, they, they did a great job. It, it's looking good, and I hope it keeps up.
Thanks, David. Okay. Council comments?
I have one, one quick one. A lady got up and wanted us to maybe entertain a resolution to reject, reject taking on the teachers' pensions, the towns, and I think that might be a good idea to get together and do.
One resolution at a time, Mike.
Oh, and then, I did see in the governor's budget, the same thing that's come up several times. I'll call it the car tax swindle, you know, at the state level. It's lowering what we collect at the, for a car tax, and then the state will pay us what, um, what we don't collect. I just want to be on the record to say, that will never happen. They've had these things going on before, and that will never happen.
Other council comment? Okay, Jeff?
It's only nine, Jeff. Stop that. No, I, I think a lot's been said tonight. It's a challenge. This, this MDC issue is a challenge, and it's got the backdrop of having a, in, in a, in a situation where we try to develop a budget in, in what can only be described as chaos, with the revenue numbers and the expense numbers, and, and a, and a state budget that won't be determined by the time we have to adopt a budget. So we have our challenges and our estimations and our guestimations and our work cut out for us, because we won't know. And it is chaos at this point.
Well, having said that, Jeff, I know, seeing you at the table, and Mike O'Neill, we have a good team to help us through it, so. Dolores, anything?
Um, I just want to say that we did have some communication that I mailed out to this afternoon from Catherine and Matt Perry, Stockton Hill Road. They were also against, uh, opposing the MDC and giving money to Hartford.
Thank you, Dolores. Okay, I think we have one A, one resignation.
Motion to accept the resignation from the Shade Tree Commission, Philip J. Cashman, ninety-six Oxy Oak Drive, term was seven twenty-one fourteen to six thirty two thousand seventeen.
Second? Motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. We have no unfinished business. Three A.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement between the Housing Authority of the Town of Weathersfield and the Town of Weathersfield for pilot payments.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This evening, before you, is a cooperation agreement between the Housing Authority and the, and the Town of Weathersfield for the high view units that are owned by the Housing Authority. In the past, the state of Connecticut has paid the town a payment in lieu of taxes for those units. Those payments have stopped, and in the Budget and Finance Committee's discussion with the Housing Authority, the Housing Authority is proposing a pilot to replace a portion of those funds. This evening, George Kelly of the Housing Authority Board's here, Tony, the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, has been part of those conversations. So I think this is a, a, an equitable agreement for both sides. These are income-challenged units, there is a limit to what can be sustained, and I think the Housing Authority coming to the table with a proposed pilot in, in replacing those state funds is not only honorable, but a great partnership between the town and the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Questions for George, while he's here on this? Tony, anything you want to add from?
He's asking a question, he sat here all night.
For two hours. How's your water bill?
No, uh, no, George.
Oh, by the way, we do pay the sewer for the.
George and the lady in charge of the Housing Authority came to us, and, I mean, this is a good resolution. Here, you know, we're at the point where they cut the pilot money, where we could receive zero. The Housing Authority's coming forward and offering to pay us a part of it, based on what they can, so I think this is a win, win for the town to get something versus nothing is great. I commend them for it.
Just a comment, as the liaison to the Housing Authority, they work very hard to do the right thing, and we had discussion last year about this process, and I encourage them to come to budget finance and have, begin to have some of those discussions, because it, it is a very difficult challenge for them to kind of balance all of the different things that occur within that type of an organization. So it is commendable that they're able to come forward with this in good faith.
Thank you, Don. And thank you, George, for, appreciate it very much. Thank you. We have a motion of second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Three B.
Motion to approve the change order to Quisenberry Arcary that was approved by the WHS Building Committee.
Second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sally Katz is here to answer any specific questions, but basically QA, who's the architect for the high school project, is designing the rooftop screening and the landscaping to shield the rooftop units, not only from the adjacent neighbors, but as you drive in, to provide some visual buffer of those larger units fronting Wilken Hill Road. So the cost of designing and implementing that, it, that solution is increasing the PO for Quisenberry Arcary by thirty-six thousand dollars.
Questions about that?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, in January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, it, uh, it came before P&amp;Z, and they were supposed to have a design of any equipment that may require, a design of the roof that may require any equipment for additional screening, and I'm kind of wondering what happened there and why we're paying again.
Well, the original design of the rooftop screening was based upon having the geothermal in place. That was, those were the plans that were originally bid, and that was what was there. And of course, what you, what would happen was, the geothermal was removed from the project, and we had to go back to relying on more traditional, um, heating, or actually cooling solutions, which included the larger units on the roof. We did go back to planning and zoning, I think, back in fifteen, fourteen or fifteen, when we instituted the, the new HVAC system, and at that, they left it open to the building committee bringing back the final screening plan, because we were kind of doing this as we went in the middle of the project. And the final rooftop unit, which is visible from Wilken Hill Road, wasn't set until August of this year, so we didn't know the full visual impact of the project in the rooftop units until August. And that's when the screening plan really became one of the final elements to be resolved per the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval.
I was just going to follow up on that. Planning and zoning is now, when is that scheduled to address?
Next week?
Okay.
And then I, I think Quisenberry has done a lot of high schools. I think they've done, I mean, they, they should have known about what this was going to look like, unless they're not good at what they do, I guess.
Well, we also had a budgetary issue, too. We didn't know till the end of the project, and we probably would have had something sooner, but we got hung up all summer on a swimming pool issue, which consumed tons of resources and tons of time to resolve.
So this is, this is thirty?
I just don't think they should be paid anymore.
This is thirty-six thousand dollars to come up with a design to screen the air conditioning?
And a design to screen, well, there's three rooftop units, plus shielding the neighborhood landscaping plan.
Okay, but I thought, I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I thought that we were moving away from doing a screening on the roof because of the roof patching, and we were going to just do a landscape plan.
I think the committee at the last meeting, uh, went with the screening and the landscaping.
Partial screening and landscaping, based upon conversations with the adjacent neighborhood.
Yeah, I just, I gotta echo Mike's point, though. That seems like an enormous amount of money to come up with a screen plan, thirty-six grand? I mean, I could build a car. Really?
That is what the committee has approved.
Yeah, the committee approved Sally Katz, Director of Physical Services.
Thanks, Sally.
Um, the QA also included, there's, there's the landscaping architects in addition to the Quisenberry architects. The, the screening is a very elaborate system and takes, uh, there's also structural engineering that has to go along with it. So this is a multiple-part, um, change to the change order. It involves the landscape architects, the architect of record, and the engineers, and the work that they have to do. It's now a multifaceted, um, project.
Well, I'm led to believe, though, with thirty-six thousand in design, we're talking about hundreds of thousands in screening.
Over two-hundred thousand dollars worth of work to be done.
That is correct.
And it, that's, that's the, the hope of the board, the, the, the building committee, Steve? That's, that's news.
That is news.
That is the direction the building committee is taking, partial screening with enhanced landscaping. And I was corrected in that the P&amp;Z meeting for this is tomorrow night, not next week.
I think Donna has a comment.
I have a question.
Yeah, Don.
The, um, noise level from the units that are held, it, what does it do in conjunction with our noise ordinance?
It is, the current setup is within the noise ordinance. We had readings taken in the last month of the noise, and it is within our parameters.
But at night, it's not?
It is.
It is.
I heard it was not.
Uh, we've, we, we use the decimeters on locations throughout the site adjacent to the property owners, and it's all within the ordinance.
We are well below the daytime and nighttime levels.
Near the school or up on the property line?
They did both. They did gradual, um, readings from the school all the way back to the property line.
There's four inches of insulation within each of those units before you even, before the sound's even getting, getting out of there, so. And we heard a noise concern from one neighbor, which we vetted through the decimeter.
Yes, you did.
With the neighbor?
The neighbor was told of the outcome. They were at the meeting with, the building committee has held three meetings with the neighborhood. We sent out over a hundred and five letters. A half dozen residents came to each of the meetings to review the landscaping proposals and address their concerns as it, as it regards to screening noise landscaping, and the building committee has vetted all those issues.
Question. If we do not approve this, and this doesn't happen, what's the repercussion?
We don't build a screening, and the planning and zoning will have to deal with it.
Why don't we get somebody to design it for like five thousand?
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to mount that to the roof of the high school.
I, I know, I didn't.
We're just under no obligation to do this, right?
Other than the P&amp;Z approval of the project required a final screening plan before final approval of the project by them was done. This was an element to the approval of the, of the project by P&amp;Z. A final screening plan will be approved and constructed.
But if we don't want to do it, does it have to get done?
I, I, I would need a lawyer to answer that, because we would have other property owners in town telling the Planning and Zoning Commission, well, I just don't want to do that, so you can't make me.
It just seems like an awful lot of money for something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more focused on the amount. I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't usually, with the, I mean, the building committee's done incredible work, the project's been great, and we've stayed on budget, but I thought that we're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars screening those AC units, and I've been by it a dozen times. I, I, I do think there needs to be screening, but the thought that we're going to spend hundreds of thousand, and thirty-six, just to come up with a plan, I, I, I'm sorry.
As Sally mentioned, and again, this is, this is where it gets a little complex, the, the screening won't be all penetrated through the roof, there's going to be the creation of what's called dunage, where the supports for the metal screening are attached directly to the structural members of the building, and that takes a structural engineer to work.
Well, no, I understand that, I think.
It's over, and it's two hundred feet.
Well, I think, I think that, that, that's begging the question, though, that we're going to go down this path of a, of a structural change, which I'm not convinced of myself. I mean, I'm not an engineer, and I'm certainly not on the building committee, so I don't want to preempt it, but I, I'm, I'm not going to vote for this. I think it's an excessive amount of money for a design plan, forget getting to the, to the, to the actual work. Um, you know, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't look at this that closely, because I was looking at the other things this week, but I think this is an excessive amount of money. And I, I would, I would say, speaking on behalf of myself, and the council can do as it wishes, I would go back to the building committee, say, I, I think it's an excessive amount, they need to revisit it. But you vote as you, as you wish, as a council. Paul, I just got a question. This is for the design aspect of it.
Right.
Well, design implementation, all in.
Well, their work, their portion.
Right.
This, this isn't the actual screening.
No, no, the two hundred thousand dollars, I would imagine, is down the pike.
Right.
Right.
But what are we on the hook for right now? I mean, I would imagine, having looked at some of the plans that were presented to, or will be presented to P&amp;Z, Quisenberry Arcary has already done design work. Quisenberry Arcary has already done design work, haven't they? They've already--
Conceptual design.
They've done, yes. They've done some computer-generated renderings of what potential options would look like.
That's not $36,000.
No.
No, these are-- these are construction plans.
These are construction documents. These are what the companies who will erect the screens will use in order to do their work. And this is also for the landscape plan, for the species, the how they are to be planted and maintained. So there's that. The landscaping part, the structural engineering, obviously, is to go back and to do the calculations for the different screens because it is on multiple locations. And then figure out, as Jeff mentioned, the dunage portion, the correct supports for that. And then the way that the screens are mounted because they do have to have the calculations for wind-- not only weight, but it's wind and the other physics of dealing with the climate on top of the roof, even though the roof is down more in a valley.
Right. It seems to me that, going to Donna's point, where those decibel readers were located-- if they're up at the homeowner's property, their backyard's on Wilkett, you know, they're at the same level as those 14-foot-high units. The wall goes up, you know? Sound doesn't go out, it's got to go up somewhere. We won't be able to test whether or not they actually work until after, unfortunately.
Well, right now, today, we meet the noise ordinance for noise of those units offsite. There's no violation.
And I will say, the meeting I was at, and I think that's when the one resident-- and this is just with the decibel issue-- most-- the residents that spoke, most of them said, "The noise is better now than what it was with all of the old units." And it wasn't clear to me, even the resident who complained about the noise level, whether she was talking about in the past or now because she then said something about, "Well, it's good now." So I don't-- I'm not sure that the decibel issue is the issue, certainly with those residents. It was the visual.
People had discussed--
That was the major issue, at least from what I heard.
People had discussed some of the noise last summer. And we reminded them that last summer was a very active construction season. And so we were also working on the weekends. We were really working to meet that schedule to get-- to get school to start on schedule. So the types of noises that, you know, the generators, the lights, you know, everything else that was going on in the pool in and around may have also caused more of what they were thinking was going to be permanent noise versus just construction-related activities.
Right. Following up on, you know, the actual physical barriers, not the plants or the landscape. With their-- as you drive into the entrance off of Wilkett, there is a L-shaped screening on the roof for one of the 14-foot-high new condenser units. Is there a screening to the north side as well, closer to the tennis court side?
No.
No. The rooftop will include an L-shaped over those two units you see as you drive into Wilkett Hill Road. The units-- the third unit you see on the right as you come in will be unscreened, and so will anything on the north side. The only physical screen on the roof will cover the two units on that corner piece.
As you drive straight in.
Were the concerns from-- I'm sorry, Sally.
The third unit will-- and that's where you have to kind of take the plan in totality. The-- some of the new plantings screened from the street, screen that farthest unit.
Okay. How about the neighbors to the north of the entrance on Wilkett, looking out their back? Will there be landscape?
On the hill, there will be.
Yes.
On that new--
Yes.
Parking lot area? Okay.
Now, you've got to remember that the houses on the north side, they already have a row of screening between them and the tennis court, which will block their visual. But the houses that sit up along Wilkett Hill Road and are on the right as you come in, there'll be enhanced landscaping on that hillside.
Above the parking lot?
Above the driveway.
Oh, yeah, as it comes around.
As it comes around, yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Actually, on both sides of the driveway, there'll be enhanced landscaping.
How about the ones on the side street?
What side street?
The side street over, not off of Wilkett?
Westway?
Or behind the tennis court? Those things had covered, right?
Yeah, we put a landscaping strip behind that--
All down there?
--emergency road already.
Yeah, there are multiple arborettes along that side of the building.
The Building Committee honestly would have preferred just sticking with the landscape buffer, which would have shielded the external view of those units from the road. But our meetings with the neighborhood, they were very adamant that as you drove in, the building looks incomplete if you can see that unit when you turn onto the driveway, and requested that there be some screening of those units as you drive into the facility.
They told the dollar amount that this is going to cost?
They were.
They were.
That's unfortunate.
One more question in regards to this piece of the project. How much was-- with the change from the geothermal? I mean, that was known earlier on in the project. Understand that there were a lot of competing time elements to get things done. But was this-- I'm sure they had to do some design work during the preceding time, before now, to accommodate the units and where they were going to accommodate them. So what was that original budget? How much has been spent on that planning aspect and design aspect? And then this is because they didn't anticipate the need for a screening?
Well, the screening that would have worked on the roof for the geothermal would not have been sufficient for this. Now, we did buy one screen already. There is one-- we own one screen, which--
Which units are going on?
It's more towards the J Street, that side of the building because it was-- that was one of the units that was always going to be there. And so there was the screen for that. But as the project progressed and the changes happened, you know, there was-- it didn't happen in a vacuum. There were so many things going on in order to meet schedule and program and other spaces. You know, getting the right units, getting them up on the roof, getting the project moving along was really the main focus for the Building Committee.
Getting it open.
Getting it open and keeping it on as close to schedule as possible.
And budget. Again, this-- the whole driver was the budget.
Budget and time and program.
I don't know if we should try to table this or just vote on it. But, you know, I-- or just give them a budget and say, "You've got to screen it for such and such a number." The thought that we're going to spend $250,000 or $300,000 screening those, I think it's an outrageous decision, myself. And $36,000 to design it is-- I don't know, I must be on another planet. But I don't see it. But whatever. You want to table it and go back to the board, back to the design?
The architect is appearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow night.
Well, he can do that, but I'm just--
Well, I wouldn't want to waste his time.
Well, then I would put him off. I mean, this isn't that urgent, is it?
Yeah. We want to build it this summer.
Well, it costs $36,000 to design it, that's going to be months.
I don't--
You know--
Move to table?
Second.
We have a motion to table in a second. I don't think that's open for debate. I think we just vote on that. All in favor of tabling? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Pass back our condolences. Tell them to work on the number. We have minutes-- no, no, we have introduction of resolutions. Those are on the table. And then the minutes of February 6th. Sorry, Sally.
Let the chairman know.
Minutes of February 6th, 2017.
Second, Pat.
Any changes, additions, modifications? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Public comment? Any more public comment, guys? Tom?
Good evening. Tom Mazarella, 600 Wilkett Hill Road. I figured I'd wait till the dust settled. Plus, Mike's here now, you can hear me. Regarding your M D C resolution that was passed, I think it's great that something got put down in writing. I don't agree with anything that gives the M D C any wiggle room whatsoever. I think the M D C's proven in previous presentations here in Weathersfield that they pretty much do what they want to do. We got a notice of our new monthly water bill. There was some gentleman came here and gave a presentation to give us heads up that that was coming. But we certainly didn't get to vote on it or the town didn't get to give their point of view other than at the meeting that night. Going back several months, when this whole Hartford default situation arose, you'll remember that some executives from M D C came to this chamber and gave a presentation and discussed what might possibly happen. I remember Counselor Latina asked, you know, "How long do we have to decide on this?" Well, the answer was, "You don't get to decide. The M D C decides." Now, there's 29 voting members, I believe, representatives. I think Weathersfield has three and one alternate. Following that meeting several months ago, they notified everybody that there was going to be an emergency meeting to pass that. And there was. It was the next morning, I believe, at 8:00 in the morning. I'm not even sure how many of those 29 people made it to that vote. But in any event, it was a unanimous vote that all the other member towns should pick up the slack. So you see, they just do what they want to do. And I think you have to keep the pressure on them. If it's a strongly worded resolution, fine. But also keep in mind that the city of Hartford has the ability, whether it's legal or not, to just not pay the bill. And I think Weathersfield should take that very same approach. If it should ever come to the fact that we have to pony up $650,000 for half a year, plus maybe another $1.3 million for the following year, that Weathersfield just refuses to pay the bill and see if they shut off the water. They won't. It's a sewer bill. It's not a water bill. It's M D C, but it's a sewer bill. The-- that ad valorem method of accounting for sewage is pretty flawed in itself. They pretty much do what a lot of agencies do. They figure out their costs, and then they figure out how they're going to divvy it up. No one's looking at the cost of the actual processing of all the sewage water. They're just telling us that's what it is. Here's Weathersfield's share, here's Bloomfield's share. Now, if they switch to a user-based fee, they're not going to meter our sewage. They're going to base it on water. And you're going to get a whole different spread of what the bills are going to be. Some residential users are going to be shocked. They're going to pay a lot of money for sewage that they never even imagined because it was buried in their tax bill. I think that's part of the motivation of going to the monthly bill because people are going to see one-third of their water bill divvied up. They're going to get these monthly bills. And maybe they're not so quick with the math. Instead of paying $130, they're going to pay 40, maybe 50. Maybe they'll pay another $15 for sewage fee every month. And next thing you know, we're going to be paying all that money. So I think you, as council members representing all the taxpayers in Weathersfield, you need to keep the pressure on. And I appreciate the town manager and Mayor Mountain Ari attending all these meetings on how to resolve the issue. But I think at the end of the day, it's going to get put to a vote by those 29 or so people. And they're going to vote the way they want. And they're going to say, "Sorry, Weathersfield, we took a vote. It was unanimous. You pay the bill. Thank you."
Thank you. Dave?
Good evening. David Krueger, 149 Broad Street. I was listening to the talk about the high school. And I saw a meeting of the Planning and Zoning over a month ago. And they were talking about the high school, about the heating elements or whatever they were on the roof, those big machines. And the comments by several people on the committee were that it looks horrible. Our high school, we spent, what is it, over $70 million on it? And if you pass by it, it doesn't look any better. It may be a little worse. You know, I fully support hiding those units on the roof because it just looks horrible. And I wish they spent a little bit more money on aesthetics. If you look at the Discovery Center that they bought, that office building that we gave them in Weathersfield, the Crick Building, they have a beautiful entryway. They have that overhang. They have architectural elements in the front, beautiful color scheme. And then I go to pass by Weathersfield. Hi, I thought, oh, I passed by there. I'm thinking, it's complete. I look at it from the outside, it doesn't look any better. I'm sure they did great job inside, but from the outside, it's not good. You know, I agree with Paul. The expense for the architect seems high. It does seem high. And as far as the $200,000 for the screens, well, it's a commercial building. Commercial expenses are higher. Maybe it'd be a good idea if they look into another architectural firm. But I do think they need to do something about the aesthetics. The high school, with all the money we spent, and we're getting a school that doesn't look any better, I think we need to invest a little bit of money in that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Thanks for your indulgence. We retain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I would give her about 20 minutes. Sarah?